All right, City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1432. Today is April 15th. Happy Tax Day. It is now seven o'clock. We are going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) Under the United States of America, the Republic of which stands one nation, under that indivisible, indivisible, and just for all.
All right, starting with item number one on the agenda, which is roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Present.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
All right, I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Harrison.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Harrison.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly seconded. He's actually doing military service right now, and that's an excused absence. So, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye. Aye. All right. He is excused. Moving on to item number two, which is the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? Are there any changes or adjustments to be made? All right, hearing none. Going to move on to item three, which is presentations, and we actually do not have any. And then, we're going to just go ahead, straight to item number four on the agenda, which is communications from the public. So, we've reached a point that, in our meeting, where a citizen may express an opinion, make a statement, address a concern, or ask question of any subject that is not otherwise on the agenda. Comments will be recorded into the minutes and passed along to be addressed by the appropriate staff or city council committee as needed. This portion of the meeting is not for city council to provide direct responses to a citizen comment, but to hear what the citizen has to say. If you wish to leave a response from the city to your concern or request for information, please be sure to leave your contact information with the clerk before you leave the meeting. Accordingly, all speakers must address their remarks through the mayor. Your comments will be limited to five minutes. So, if there are anyone, a part of the audience, who would like to make any comments, all right, hearing none, we're going to move on to item number five on the agenda, which is reports from council members. And we're going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to let everyone know that we're going to have our certification meeting this coming Wednesday. It is going to be at 6:30. Really hope that everyone can come out and just kind of hang out with us, because we're getting ready for our spring flower contest. And we're asking, if you want your home to be, your yard to be judged, please call in to the city so that we can get your name, get your address, so that we can come out and judge. And if you're interested in becoming a judge, please let us know. And so, that's really about all I have for now, as my report for committee.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Adams. And I don't have any work session items for you. Would you like to add any?
Yes, sir, I would like to add a work session item. I would like to have a discussion during work session about our council meetings being on the same exact day as our school board meetings. And with our previous discussions about being good neighbors, and how as a city, we are supporting our school district, possibly, we need to consider whatever alternatives we can, so that we can participate as, the same time that we have school board is the exact same time that we have council.
Yeah, we can have a discussion about that, the next work session, but I do want it noted that, you know, we want to keep the same council meeting schedule, and we often, even though we are partners in a lot of ways, we are separate bodies, so we don't want to always be present at each other's meetings, but that's duly.
We are a separate body, but parents don't have the option to go to both, and that might be beneficial for some, so at least, let's just have a conversation.
Right.
Thank you.
It's added. But I do want it noted that both are recorded, and people can always write in and watch both online, especially on Wake Cross.
They are, but it would be in good faith if we could have a discussion.
Noted.
Thank you.
Moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Well, good evening. It's a wonderful day in the city, ain't it? With Tax Day being today, good evening. The only report I have is on environmental awareness. We've got a rescheduled meeting that will take place on tomorrow evening. At 7:00 PM, it'll be here in this wonderful building. But also, to note for residents, as summer is quickly approaching, 50% off of summer camp is the discount that we have in partnership with our great folks down at the zoo. And so, you can still take advantage of that by going to forestpark.org and find out more information. We also have green mower electric reimbursement program going on. A lot of folks have started to, you know, cut their grass and things like that, so part of our green initiatives for this city and wanting to reduce our environmental footprint, or rather, our carbon footprint, that is a wonderful program as well, that you can find more information on our website. And then, upcoming next month, for May 4th on a Saturday, is our citywide yard sale. You do have to register. It is imperative that you register for that, so people know exactly where you are. You can go again to the website in order to do that. And then, lastly, we had our Summer Youth Program Fair on Saturday last year. If you all remember, we had one that I hosted, and this year, Jay and his team knocked it out of the park. We had almost 200 folks in attendance. All of the programs from the different vendors and partners, at least that were from the City of Forest Park, were filled. There are wait lists for all of those programs. We have photography, baking, mosaic artwork from community members that are volunteering to do stuff. We've got Building Your Own Bike Camp at one of our, one of the partnered places as well. And so, everything was filled. Folks had a wonderful time, and so, we are certainly looking forward to that program to continue. And I just wanted to say, thank you so much for Jay and his team, for a really outstanding job that they did on that. Everyone had a wonderful time. The Greater Cincinnati Realtors had their, they celebrated their Realty Week last week, and it was so kind of them to have their culminating event in the City of Forest Park at Word of Deliverance. I was thankful to be an entrepreneurship panelist, and I learned a lot of information about the work that they are doing, and we are very happy to have them, of course, within our, within our limits, and working here and sharing with potential buyers, the wonderful things that we have going on. And then, lastly, I attended a Historical Society meeting last week at the library. Very interesting. Chris Anderson was also a part of that, and the conversation was about the origination of Forest Park and how the land was purchased from Cantor Brothers and whatnot. And there was a lot of information that I learned, so they've done a very good job, and I encourage you all to check out their meetings. They are once a month.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Do you have any work session items to add?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Moving on to First Vice Mayor Holt.
I do not have a report, thank you, and I don't have any, well, as of now, I don't have anything that I want to add to the work session, but I'm thinking of something, and I will get in touch with you.
All right.
If I have.
Thank you for that. Moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time.
All right. Do you have any work session items you would like to add?
No, I do not.
All right, and then, moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Yes, Mayor, I do not have a report to give at this time.
Okay. And would you like to add any items to the work session?
None, at this time.
All right, thank you. So, that closes item number five. Moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. Just very briefly, last Friday, we did swear in six new firefighters, so I want to thank Chief Jones and Assistant Chief Hill for their diligence to recruit more talent coming to Forest Park. You know, our fire department is second to none, and I'm just really glad to see the next batch of recruits coming in and joining, being a part of our wonderful city. And then, thank you, City Manager Jones, for making that happen as well. It's always a great thing to see young people stepping up and becoming firefighters, and all of their parents, their families there, supporting them as well. So, it was a very beautiful ceremony. And to echo what Councilwoman Clark said, the Greater Cincinnati Realtors Association did have their National Realtors Week last week, and their final event was on Saturday, and they partnered with local church, the Word of Deliverance. So, we do want to thank Bishop Hilton for allowing them to use their space, but they actually had 60 different vendors, 60 businesses that focused on homeownership, entrepreneurship. There were attorneys, there were people who were, you know, selling clothes, there were a lot of different vendors, but it was a lot of information on home buying and homeownership resources. So, we do want to thank the Greater Cincinnati Realtors Association for deciding to have their event in Forest Park. It was, I believe, it was over 400 or 500 people that attended throughout the day. They actually brought out food trucks. It was a very nice, very nice event. And with that, that concludes my report. And I only have one item that I intend to add to the work session. I know it's going to be a long work session, so please, Takiya, do not kill me, but today was Tax Day, and we actually said, after Tax Day, we will discuss doing another Tax Town Hall. A lot of residents come in here, they are paying tax bills. It's not the most delightful time of year, but this is a good time to sit down and let everyone know what the city is using this tax money for, what the purpose of it is, what's the difference between residential income tax, as well as what's the difference between that and property tax. So, we had a Tax Town Hall last year, and we actually had the county treasurer and the former county auditor come out for that event, and a lot of residents did leave the event, saying that they learned a lot of information. So, I appreciate every staff member of the City of Forest Park for working and staying late today, but this is another thing that we should have a discussion on, to have the next Tax Town Hall, so we can alleviate some of the misinformation out there about taxes in Forest Park. And with that, that concludes my report, and that is the only work session item I wanted to add. So, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is the City Manager's Report from Mr. Don Jones.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yes, it was a great, great Saturday, lots of things going on here in the community, and I want to thank our staff again for holding a great, great event at the Senior Center with the Summer Program Fair. It was well-attended, and looked like everyone was having a lot of fun. I know they ran out of popcorn. Arbor Day is coming up, it's April the 26th, 10:00 PM, or 10:00 AM, excuse me. We'll be planting a tree, as we always do. We are a tree city, and we always celebrate it, and invite everyone to come out. We'll have more information as to where, but around the shelter area, we're going to be planting a tree and placing Mayor Johnson's plaque at that time. So, everyone's invited, the public's invited, and we hope to see everyone there. Again, thank the staff again. It was all hands-on deck today, or at least for the last week. It's Tax Day, and all departments helped out, whether it was recreation, city councils, city council, everyone was here, police department, fire department, building department. We all chipped in, and everybody came and helped out with servicing the public today. It was one of the, probably the biggest day I've seen since I've been here in terms of Tax Day. It was packed in here, and we hope everyone, thank you for their patience, because there was a lot of folks here today, and our staff just did a really good job, you know, working through everyone and trying to give everybody really good service. So, again, thanks to the staff, and thanks for the people who came to pay their taxes today and make sure that they were in compliance, but again, thanks to the staff. Next week, we're going to be awarding the contract for the new sign out front. I know there's been a lot of questions about it, but we do have the bids in, and we'll be discussing that at the next work session, so it'll hopefully be on the agenda to talk about. But again, you'll be able to see some of the options, and we'll be talking about that, so again, that's coming up, once we pick it. We'll get that thing built and get it reinstalled here, or installed here, and replace that old and aging bad sign that's sitting out front right now. Finally, I want to thank, or congratulate Jessica Miranda, our 28th District Representative, who is now not our 28th District Representative, but I want to congratulate her on her new position as County Auditor. And it's great that we have someone local to handle that, and I'm sure she'll do a great job, and we look forward to working with her into the future. Other than that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that, Don. Anyone have any questions for our City Manager? All right. Moving on to item number eight on the agenda, which is other reports. We're going to start with our Law Director, Mr. John Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last meeting, I gave a brief summary to you and the City Manager about vaping laws and the fact that the State of Ohio basically usurped any power local government had with respect to enforcement of the vaping laws. For the City Manager, I did review a proposed paragraph regarding the Roller Bank Rental Agreement, and I have worked on a draft in response to a complaint we received from the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. If there are any other questions, I would be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions for our Law Director? All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to our other report from our Clerk of Council, Mrs. Takiya Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers 4, 04-2024 through 13-2024, and Resolution Number 12-2024 has been posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Moving on to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders, and there are none, so we're going to go right along to item number 10, which is new business, and I need a motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title-only ordinance numbers 04-2024 through 13-2024.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just that these ordinances were posted six days prior to this meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark.
You're welcome.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right, motion passes 6-0. Clerk, will the clerk please read ordinance number 04-2024 by title only?
Ordinance number 04-2024, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 8,862,000 various-purpose bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I, motion ordinance number 04-2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, and this, this discussion statement will, would be the footprint for the following ordinance that has a really supportive mechanism for the actions that are going to be taking place by the city, because the annual 2023 bond anticipation notes have, have a span there on their mature date of May the 25th, 2024. And this requires fundings of 9.974 million, as outlined in our 2023 approved budget. These funds will be allocated toward diverse purposes, including streets and every pair's storm, sewers, land, building, and technology improvements. And with this statement as being the initial footprint for the following ordinance, I move for ordinance number 04-2024.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Just to be clear, so everyone is aware that the discussion item that Councilmember Sylvester just brought up is going to be also applicable to the next nine ordinances, so please bear with us as we, as we get through this. But will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 04-2024 passes 6-0. Will the clerk please read ordinance number 05-2024 by title only?
Ordinance number 05-2024, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 1,085,000 real estate acquisition bond anticipation notes, Series 2023-2024 renewal by the City of Forest Park, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I motion ordinance number 05-2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
This ordinance also require the funding as outlined by our 2023 budget.
Thank you, Councilmember. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. All right, ordinance passes 6-0. Will the clerk please read the next ordinance number 06-2020 by title only?
Ordinance number 06-2024, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 1,19,000 street improvement 2023 program bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion?
I motion ordinance number 06-2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any further discussion?
No further discussion.
All right, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
All right, motion passes 6-0. Will the clerk please read ordinance number 07-2024 by title only?
Ordinance number 07-2024, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 352,500 municipal building improvement bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I motion ordinance number 07-2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No further discussion, Mayor.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
All right, motion passes 6-0. Will the clerk please read ordinance number 08-2024 by title only?
Ordinance number 08-2024, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 100,000 fire station improvement bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion ordinance number 08-2024.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
No further discussion.
All right, so, will the clerk please call the roll?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 08-2024 passes 6-0. Will the clerk please read ordinance number 09-2024?
Ordinance number 09-2024, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 135,000 fire equipment acquisition bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you for that. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion ordinance number 09-2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No further discussion.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right, ordinance passes 6-0. Will the clerk please read ordinance number 10-2024 by title only?
Ordinance number 10-2024, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 300,500 equipment acquisition bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
Okay, is there another motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion ordinance number 10-2024.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. I'll take that as a no.
No further discussion.
Yeah. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Oh?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 10-2024 passes 6-0. We'll take a quick break, so let everybody gather themselves. Now, will the clerk please read ordinance number 11-2024 by title only?
Ordinance number 11-2024, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 262,000 park improvement bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Clark? Seeing if y'all awake.
Okay, yes. Uh, park improvement.
Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
That's what I am, right here.
I motion ordinance number, where about, 10?
I was on 11, I'm sorry.
This is number 11.
11. 11-2024. Yes, sir.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No further discussion.
All right, thank you for that. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
All right, ordinance passes 6-0. And now, will the clerk please read ordinance number 13-2024 by title only?
Ordinance number 13-2024, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 6,158,000 various-purpose bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I motion ordinance number 13-2024.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any further discussion?
No further discussion.
All right, thank you for that. Will the clerk call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
All right. Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I motion ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All right. It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, no further discussion except thirteen finally become a lucky number.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four passes six, zero. Now, thank you to everyone in the audience to bear with us as we got through those. Uh, Don, if you want to just go briefly and explain, uh, the, the purpose of us putting these, these notes back up, uh, to be voted on by council?
Yeah, every, uh, every year the city, um, the, we have one-year notes, a series of one-year notes. So every year they come due and we have to reissue them. So that's why there's so many of them. So we, we would reissue the existing ones, pay off some of the balance and then reissue for the remaining principal. And if we need some more, uh, for the upcoming year, then we would issue new ones as well. So this is just the, and each one of these note issues has a particular purpose in it. So if you talked about, that's why there's so many of them, because each purpose has to have its own issue. And that's why we, we, uh, we put them all together like this. But, uh, we go out, we go out to the market and we issue these new notes and, uh, and basically refinance everything uh, with, with a principal reduction. I think we've, uh, had a principal reduction this year of about a million dollars.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, uh, so that's why there's so many of them, because each one has a, you know, it's storm water. It's, it's firehouse. It's improvements. It's land.
Yeah.
And, uh, streets and everything. And then when you add them all together, that becomes one big one. So that's why there's one that's, that's big and then the rest of them are little pieces of that. So you don't add them all together and come up with a big number. Um, they're all part of the, of a, of a, of a larger bond issue, or excuse me, note issue. And we do this on an annual basis, uh, in the middle of May is when they come due. And, uh, this is a part of our routine financing to, uh, to help fund the city.
All right. Thank you for that, Don. And we'll be doing it again next year as well. But if any resident wants to take a deeper dive at, on any of these and any of the infrastructure or technology improvements, you, this is posted across the city and it's also available on the website. Um, and with that, I will need another motion to suspend.
I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring a reading in full and read for the first time by title only, resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Only that this resolution was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor Holt. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
All right. Motion to suspend passes six to zero. So will the clerk please read resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc. for the purchase of, for the purchase, public safety, mobile, and portable radios.
All right. Is there a motion, Councilmember Clark?
Uh, yes. I move that we approve resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Um, it was pretty much verbatim, but just that this resolution allows our City Manager to enter into a contract with Motorola Services so that our fire department, um, can have public safety radios.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilmember. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty-four passes six to zero. Uh, so I need to make, I, I make a motion to concur with the City Manager to hire Quentin L. Harris as the Economic Development and Community Investment Director?
Second.
All right. It's been moved improperly seconded. Don, if you want to go over really quickly, um, the city is going to fill a vacant position for our Economic Development Director. Um, this has been, uh, a, a, a journey. Uh, there have been a lot of candidates, but this is an incredibly important position, um, as it relates to the relationship that the city has with businesses. And that means recruitment, retention, and a number of other things. But Don, if you want to just give a brief overview about the role and, uh, the person who made the cut, so to speak?
Well, we, we received a lot of interest and a lot of, uh, great applicants. And, uh, we, we, uh, had a group of, uh, not only the, uh, staff, but also some of the members of the public as well. Uh, Mayor Johnson was on that and, and, um, some other folks as well. And, uh, we, we interviewed them all and we've decided that, uh, uh, this person is the one we want. Uh, he's very experienced and, uh, uh, extremely capable. And, uh, we believe he'll do an excellent job here in the city of Forest Park and we can't wait to get him on, on board. Again, this is our Economic Development Director position and they'll be handling, uh, the development of the city throughout the, you know, over the next, we, we think, hopefully a great long career.
Uh huh.
Uh, and, uh, and, uh, we just look forward to finally getting this position filled. We had a great person in there as well, uh, Paul. And, uh, he did a great job for us for many years. And, uh, so it's, you know, we, we look forward, I think we'll have as, as, as good a person with this hire as we had with Paul and as, hopefully as long a career here serving the city of Forest Park.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Don.
So, um, I don't know if I read the start date in the paperwork that we've got.
I think it's three weeks. It's, uh, I believe the Monday that's six?
May sixth?
May sixth? Yeah, May sixth.
Okay. May sixth. So, um, we are really excited about filling that position. Um, yeah, Paul Brim was formerly in that position. A lot of people may know Paul Brim. He was there, I believe, twenty-five years or so.
Maybe longer.